Ladies and gentlemen, this is Board of Education to order and ask that we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Thank you, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Present.
Mr. Krim.
Present.
Mr. Lopez. Mrs. Moore.
Present.
Dr. Navarres Martinez.
Present.
Mr. Noweski.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez. Ms. Williams.
Present.
Mrs. Willis.
Present.
Who are Ms. Present?
Thank you, and I do know that Dr. Rodriguez will unfortunately not be able to join us this evening, so this is going to be our board for the evening. Next on the agenda is reading the district mission statement, and Vice President Moore just graciously asked if I would read it since it is my last meeting, so I will read it to grace you all one more time. "The mission of this district is to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposeful and fulfilling lives." You're welcome. Next, we're going to check to see if we have any additions to the agenda. See none, public comment on agenda items from the clerk? No. That brings us to our presentations this evening. First up, or our only presentation this evening, will be budget amendment number one. I'm going to invite Ms. Adams.
Good evening, see if we can get this right tonight. Our first amendment this evening is a very good one. As a reminder of the context, we made assumptions April through June for this fiscal year. We made assumptions about enrollment projections, state aid and foundation allowance, staffing totals, and categorical allocations. The actual fund balance changes between April and June of each year. The audited fund balance is presented in November after the fiscal year 25 budget is approved, and budget amendment number one reflects changes as of November 30th from the approved budget as adopted in June. An overview of budget amendment number one. When you adopted the budget, we assumed that our fund balance June 2025 would be $40.1 million. Our audited fund balance showed an increase of $7.4 million, which would bring our fund balance this June to $47.6 million prior to any of the other changes we will discuss tonight. We will discuss the increases in revenues, a net of $1.5 million additional revenues, less increases to our expenditure budgets of $775,000. So we're adding an additional $773,000 to our fund balance, which should bring our fund balance June 2025 to $48.3 million. And again, this is a conservative estimate. I anticipate additional changes as we go through the year, as well as recognizing additional savings as we go through the year. For revenue changes, as mentioned before, we had a net increase of $1.5 million. We had increases of over $6 million primarily from property taxes, miscellaneous revenue and rebates and refunds. ISD taxes, Medicaid Hold Harmless increased, as well as the incoming transfer from the capital projects of $4 million. As a reminder, last year, we moved almost over $10 million to capital projects to help fund some of our capital project needs for this year, but we were able to secure additional funding, which has been able, which has allowed us to reimburse the fund balance for $4 million. We also had decreases of $4.5 million. Our foundation remained at $9,608. When you adopted the budget, we were conservative. We thought we would get an additional $100 per child. We ended up getting zero per child. MIPSers had a reduction of $2.3 million. Our 22A, 22B discretionary budgets had a reduction of $1.2 million, and our food service indirect was reduced. So these decreases were $4.5 million, netted against the increases of $6, brings us to the net increase of $1.5 million above our adopted budget. We also had additional changes or costs. For staffing, we had increases of $2.5 million, primarily due to administrators on special assignment, negotiations, substitutes. When we discussed our budget, we don't expect the schools to cover the cost of subs, their staff, while staff are out on FMLA leave. That means they're paying twice with one pot of money, so we help reimburse those costs and also fill rate. We also had program investments, additional costs, outgoing transfer to capital projects. Those were because we had rollover projects. I think I mentioned those at our finance committee meetings, where we had budgets set up last year, but they actually didn't complete and aren't complete yet until probably the next month or so. So we had to move the budget into this fiscal year. We also had school and departmental carryover, the roll forward projects, and classroom grants. We also had program savings of $6.7 million, school loan repayments, mid-year reduction due to enrollment decline, and the Beekman transition. Because I didn't know how Beekman was going to play out, I had a $3 million budget just set aside just in case, and we don't need it, so we're returning that to the fund balance. So our net increases were $776,000 in expenditures. A summary of budget amendment one. Again, the adopted budget, assumed fund balance at the end of this fiscal year is $40.1 million. The audited fund balance came in with an increase of $7.4 million. We had an increase in expenditures of $776,000, an increase in revenues of $1.5 million, which brings our fund balance conservatively as to $48.3 million this coming June. And thank you. Do you have any questions?
Madam President.
Mr. Noweski?
Yes, I just had two questions. One, the change for food service, does that take care of the thing that was mentioned in the audit of needing to bring that balance down, or is that still?
That's separate.
Okay.
So the plan to bring down the fund balance, we purchased tables. I think for all of our cafeterias, new cafeteria tables and chairs, and there's many other projects in the works to improve the quality of food and the quality of food being served to the kids. The reduction for indirect is because we can only claim indirect on our staff costs and some of the supplies and materials. I can't claim indirect on anything over and above $25,000 on our contract, sorry, with Sedexo, so that's why the decrease.
Okay. And then my second question, two of the larger changes in the actual line items are people transportation and outgoing transfers. Are those both like one-time changes for projects, like those new buses?
Yes, exactly. The EPA bus rebates and the 15 new buses that we are purchasing, yes.
So this overall total budget change is kind of inflated for this year because of those projects?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President. Ms. Williams?
So I have two questions. The minister reduction is due to that new federal legislation, am I correct?
Yes, it's due to the reduction in retirement and stabilization.
And then, why didn't we get the $100 per people increase? Do we know why?
They didn't give us an increase.
That's the state aid.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the state aid, okay.
Sorry.
Sure thing, Ms. Williams, is that?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure thing, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Just on 2A and 2B discretionary reduction, what caused that?
I'm sorry, which piece?
On the decreases on 22A and 22B.
Oh, so that is based on property taxes and the money we get in state aid?
Okay, thank you. Oh, by the way, congratulations. You do a heck of a job.
Oh, thank you. I thought you were going to tell me I was having a baby or something.
Well, there are other reasons for congratulations.
Thank you.
But you haven't posted on Facebook, so I don't know.
No, and it's not probably going to happen.
Okay, so it's not happening.
I'm done donating children to the district.
Well, I was going to say thank you. You know, you mentioned it was only five slides and this, it was comprehensive. So we got the information that we needed and the questions that we had asked. And the biggest adjustment we had to make was the fact that we didn't get a foundation aid adjustment, which was, we can only do our best projections based on what's floating around at the time we make our budget, so. Seeing no questions, this is on our agenda to adopt later, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Madam President.
Sure thing, Mr. Lopez.
I have a question more for the superintendent.
Okay.
On the adjustments, let's see. School and department carryover. So this means that the schools didn't spend all their money. And I guess my question to Superintendent is, how do we adjust that? And how does that conversation look like?
No, it's a great question. So, you know, there's always these two competing interests with the way the governments are funded. You give schools money and you say, "Spend it." But you also say, "Spend it wisely." And sometimes, the wisest thing to do is to not spend every dollar because you want to, let's say, hire a full-time employee, and that you don't have enough money for. So what we've actually allowed schools to do is roll money over so that they, rather than just spend and lose, or lose, they can say, "We're going to save this money for next year, when we can add two pieces together and actually get, let's say, a full-time teacher, a full-time aide." We also understand sometimes that maybe they want to have a big purchase, a new basketball court, a new whatever. We'd rather them say, "We're going to plan for the future," than just buy a bunch of pencils because they have to spend all that money. But I also will commend Kim. One of the things that her staff does is they work with the principals, with Jessica as well, to say, "Hey, look, this is your budget. We really want you to spend it. We want you to spend it thoughtfully." But the number of dollars that our school and department carryovers really is not kind of overwhelming. The $5 mil, a lot of that was the capital projects. I think that's $4 million of the $5 million. So we have 25 schools. If the carryover is about a million for the whole district, that's not a lot. But what I want the taxpayers to know is that it's good that you do that because what you don't want is a system where you force schools to spend money just because they have it, right? So that's usually it. But Kim does a very good job saying, "Look, here's your budget. Spend it wisely," et cetera, et cetera.
Well, that's good because the last thing we want to hear is that schools don't have money.
Exactly.
And they can't do this because they don't have money. And I think we need to be aware of the fact that maybe it's not they don't have money, it's just that they don't want to spend it.
Yeah. Well, and I also really am glad you bring this up because one of the things that we've been able to do with school-based budgeting is push millions of dollars more towards the schools so they're able to do it. Now, you know, I, you know, when I was in school, you know, we sold candy bars, you know, we raised money for things. But the good news is, over the last couple of years, through taxes and the government largess, but also with the way we've redone our budget, the schools are able to get more money and they can buy more things. We have more FTE than we've had in years. Our ratios of adults to children are lowering. So they really are getting things. And in fact, I think we're just buying, because I can hear them, 45 new basketball uniforms at Eastern. So, you know, we are really finally getting there. We know there's been some time where there wasn't as much money, and now we're really hoping to spend on our children and our staff, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Great, next we are going to go on to our report from Superintendent, Mr. Schuldener.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. I'm going to bring, make my comments brief because it's possible that the end of this meeting, I might have some things to say about some events of today. But I just do want to say to anybody listening and to all four wonderful people in the audience that it has been a great first, a great rest of the year. We're really proud of the work of our faculty, of our staff, of our children. Just this week, we had our parent superintendent roundtable. There were, I think, probably over 50 people. I mean, it really was pretty wonderful. And just, there's this new energy of activity within the district. And, you know, parents are involved, kids are involved. One of the big positive mentions at this parent roundtable was about middle school sports. You know, the fact that we're bringing back a lot of the things that make school districts great. And, you know, I want to thank this board because, just like Guillermo was asking, are we spending our money and are we doing right by our children and our faculty? And, you know, if you've been watching our school board meetings, I mean, I don't wish that on anybody, but if you do, you've noticed we also just signed a great contract with LEA, really raising their salaries. Our teacher salaries are some of the highest starting salaries in the area. You know, we want to make sure that our adults are taken care of so that they can take care of our kids. There's been a lot of great things that happened this year. I'll certainly write about it in this week's Superintendent Newsletter, which will be the last one for the next couple of weeks. But, you know, we really feel like things are moving in the right direction. There's always mistakes. There's always things that we can do to get better. But I just want to thank everybody listening at home and here just for how much they've really embraced the school district. And that means an incredible lot to our community. In fact, you know, one of our ET members said that they were wearing a jacket that said Lansing School District, and somebody just in a store came up to them and said, "Hey, you know, do you work for the district?" And he said, "Yes." And he said, "I just want to tell you that I'm treated so well at Gardner and I'm a parent." And so those kinds of, just little things are really important. So I know we have a lot more to do. We have so much work ahead of us. But just to thank everybody for a wonderful, wonderful year. You know, certainly happy holidays to everybody, you know, Happy New Year. And I hope that you're able to take the two weeks off in some capacity to rest, relax, rejuvenate, and come back ready to rock and roll in January. So I'll have some other comments later, but for this, I just want to say thank you, everybody. Happy holidays, Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing you all in January.
Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. That brings us to our committee reports this evening. We have a committee report from Finance Committee, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Hi, thank you. The Finance Committee met this Monday in attendance for Dr. Navarres Martinez, Mr. Krim, and myself. We did spend the majority of the time going over the budget amendment, the presentation that we all just watched, so I won't recap that. However, I will give a brief report for November. The detailed treasures report for the period of November 1st through November 30th, 2024, is attached to this evening's agenda. The following are the highlights of the report. The beginning cash and investment balance was $80,951,318. Receipts totaled $28,947,494, while disbursements equaled $21,139,464. Net inter-fund transfers totaled $66,177 in interest from fund investments to the school and bond funds, student and bond funds, sorry, as well as journal entries to remove the due-to, due-froms in all funds. The monthly transfer to the general fund for bond expenses was $2,416,732. The ending general fund cash and investment balance on November 30th, 2024 was $91,242,257. The general fund's cash and investment balance is $42,170,622 greater as compared to the same time last year. I also want to thank our donors. We had almost $4,000 in donations in the month of November. So we always appreciate those donations. With a special thank you to Edward Jones, Blackbowed and their partners, and Schwab Charitable. So thank you very much for making a donation to the district. And Madam President, this concludes the November 2024 treasures report.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional questions this evening? All right, seeing none, that brings us to our Facilities Committee report, which the Facilities Committee was very busy. So, Mr. Lopez.
Okay, I'm going to have to pass the torch to either my friend to the right or my friend to the left. You do it, because you two were there.
All right. So the Facilities Committee met directly after the Finance Committee meeting on Monday. Present were Mr. Krim and myself. First, we got an update on our construction projects. So really good news all around there. We know that the Patton Gill Modular, they are just completing their punch list, so that is very close to being completed. We know that Mount Hope continues apace. Willow, it sounded like they were starting some interior work, like painting. So that's good news. And then Luton is in the design phase, still incorporating the parents and community members into that design process. I also want to highlight that if you look at the Lansing School District Facebook page, there are frequent updates about those construction projects that include really cool pictures. So if you're interested in seeing more contemporaneous updates and some visuals as far as what those construction projects look like, I encourage you to check out that Facebook page. It's a really great resource. Additionally, we went over a number of different things that you will find later in our consent agenda. So I will save that until we reach them. And otherwise, that concludes the Facilities Committee report.
Thank you. Any questions? I would encourage folks to ask questions because we don't ask questions on consent. So if you have any questions now would be the time for a myriad of approvals.
There are two things that I want to note for some of the things that we're going to be asked to approve. One is that there are, of course, there are so many, I'm going to have a hard time finding, but one was that there were a couple of instances where it looks as though we did not go with the lowest bidder, but what you'll notice is that the lowest bidder has an asterisk next to their bid. That means that the bid was incomplete in some way. And so if you're like, "Hey, that's not the lowest bid." It's because the lowest bid isn't actually the lowest bid. There was some kind of issue with the bid that was put forth that meant that we could not choose that particular group. Now, I'm blanking on the other thing that I wanted to highlight.
If it comes to you.
All right.
Between now and then, or anytime during the meeting, just let us know. Next, we have our Personnel Committee, Personnel Committee report update. Vice President Moore?
Yes, Madam President. I yield the floor to Trustee Nowenski, who will be giving our personnel report this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on Friday, December 6th. Excuse me. Trustees Moore and myself are present, along with CEO Slate and HR Director Ross. Reports were provided on the following topics. First, recruitment and hiring updates. At the time of the meeting, there were zero vacancies in special education and high school teaching positions, which was phenomenal to hear. Elevate K-12 staff had visited the district and provided a presentation about the services they're providing. This is the contract we approved for the instructor to be online with a guest teacher in person. And those slides can be shared with all board members. I don't know if they've been distributed yet, but it was good to hear a report on how that's working. And efforts will be made to promote open LEA positions once the new agreement salary and benefits are implemented. As Superintendent mentioned, that will be an opportunity to try to fill those unfilled assistant positions. Next, district level grievance updates. There were no new district level grievances reported, so that was good to hear. Efforts are continuing to respond to those that are still open. For employee retention, the committee did receive feedback and reviewed that from the instructional orientation session in August. So we talked about that a bit. The idea for a building-level quote-unquote ambassador position of some kind, that would be designed to welcome and support new hires, is still under consideration and discussion at the building level. And there was some brief conversation about ideas to promote or develop community perks of some kind, such as cell phone plans, wellness fitness centers, free or reduced childcare rates, dining and entertainment discounts, et cetera, that we could maybe identify with community partners to benefit teachers and other staff. For contracted services, there was discussion about vacancies or fill rates for those employers that are no longer directly with the district. And staff will explore sharing the links for employment with contractors through district communication channels. So you could also see those jobs, maybe when you, or link to those companies when you go to the district employment page. For other, just an update on the data being compiled for the types of certification and permits for each teaching position in the district. You know, we have many, so it's an undergoing task, but HR is working on tracking every position and the certificate or permit that's in place. So soon, that summary report may be available to share with the board, and then likely on a monthly basis in the personnel report, we would see that breakdown of certification type. For some new business for the committee, policies that have been discussed by the board previously on hiring, termination, resignation, retirement, and tenure were reviewed. From a personnel perspective... from a personnel perspective, and administration will work to draft some policy change recommendations that can be brought to the Policy Committee in the future or the full board, however that may be needed. And then there was just a comment at the end of separating out the resignation, termination, retirement report in future meetings as requested at a previous board meeting. That is the report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for either Vice President Moore or Trustee Nowinski? All right, seeing none. That brings us onto our consent agenda this evening, unless Dr. Kavanaugh remembered what she was gonna say. She remembered what she was gonna say. All right, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Sorry, everybody. The second thing that I wanted to highlight that you'll see on the consent agenda that came from conversations out of the Facilities Committee meeting on Monday was the contract with Greenlink. So Greenlink, remember, is the organization that we work with to help us find and facilitate opportunities toward green energy. And one thing that I find really notable is that the return on investment for working with Greenlink is 64 times. So what that means is for every dollar we spend on Greenlink, they bring in $64 in terms of grants, opportunities, et cetera. So it's been an amazing partnership, and I would highly encourage my board colleagues to approve the continued contract with Greenlink.
Thank you. Next, are there any questions for Dr. Kavanaugh at this time? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented. I'm not going to elaborate.
That's perfectly fine. It's been supported by Ms. Williams, supported by Trustee Moore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight-zero. Next, item on the agenda is the approval of our budget amendment as detailed in the attachment. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Trustee Williams?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve Budget Amendment Number One as detailed in attachment. Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Williams, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Any questions or comments on the budget amendment as presented? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight-zero. Next, we have a recommendation to approve and accept an exception request for employment as included in our packet. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education accept the Approval of Employment Resolution as presented.
It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Trustee Krim. Any questions or comments this evening? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll. Yes?
Mr. Krim?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Navarez Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Nowinski?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Mrs. Willis?
Yes. Motion passes eight-zero. Perfect. Next, we have a recommendation to nominate Trustee Lopez or support his nomination to the Michigan Association of School Boards representing Region Seven. And I would also recommend that we combine this and recommend that we nominate Rosalind Williams to serve as the alternate, as one motion, if someone would be willing to do so. I open the floor.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Navarez Martinez?
I move that the Board of Education nominate Guillermo Lopez for another term on the Michigan Association of School Boards representing Region Seven, and that the Board of Education nominate Rosalind Williams as an alternate member representing Region Seven.
It's moved by Dr. Navarez Martinez, supported by Mr. Krim. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight-zero. Just a quick clarification point. Mr. Lopez, is all that you need will be a copy of the minutes from this evening, or do you need a formal document signed?
Let me explain this a little bit.
Okay.
This is not a appointment to attend a conference, okay? This is for the election of a director, okay? And directors don't have alternates. But certainly, when the conference come up and we need, you know, delegates to delegate the assembly, that is where the alternates come in. So I don't know if, this would not be an alternate to the Board of Directors. Yeah, for the conference.
This isn't for nominated. So where we can have a proxy is when we appoint somebody to be our voting member as a delegate during the assembly. What Mr. Lopez is running for is to be on the MSB Board, representing Region Seven, which is different because then they actually put everybody who's running for Region Seven up for election, and then every board gets to, every individual board member actually gets to nominate, or we get to submit a vote as a board. And so you're, how long have you been doing this, Mr. Lopez? A while?
Well, this recommendation's really not, I'm sorry, not necessary, because again, there's no alternates to the Board of Directors. There are alternates to the MSB Leadership Institute and Convention, Annual Convention. That's where the board, you know, either nominates two of us. I think we have room for about four of us, and we're not sending the number of delegates that we should. So in that case, I don't know if this board wants to designate the delegates to the coming conference, but that's not the issue here.
Should I restate the motion and just do the first one?
Sure.
Should I just redo the motion?
No.
How do we do that?
No, I actually think it's fine. It just is that technically, Ms. Williams is not going to be a nominee for Region Seven, because we're only gonna submit Mr. Lopez, so it's fine. And we'll talk about when you guys are ready to have delegates at the convention next year.
I'll just say that, however, you know, any board member is free to apply to the Board of Directors, and you would have to go through the process as we are tonight. But for the purpose of this recommended motion, there is no alternate for the director. I guess that's the bottom line.
Sure. All right. Thank you. Now, on our agenda this evening, we have a recommended motion to extend the Greenlink contract. No, we're good. We voted on that. We're just, we're clarifying that.
Madam President?
Alternate link really doesn't mean anything. Sorry. Mr. Krim?
I move that the Board of Education approve the extension of the Greenlink contract as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Krim and supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Are there any questions or comments this evening?
Madam President?
Mr. Lopez?
Just one quick question. It may not be related to this or not, but we did order some panels, right? Is it part of this, these guys, the solar panels?
Nope. This contract is different, so we have two separate contracts with Greenlink Education. One of them is completely separate on the solar piece of it. This is all of the other green initiatives that we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question, and sorry, I didn't think to ask this earlier, and I certainly appreciate Dr. Kavanaugh's comment about the 64 to 1. Did you say it was 64 to 1? So I have no objection to this. I just want to make that clear as I ask this question. But I did see that they're asking for a $50,000 increase not to exceed amount of Greenlink's 24-25 contract. I guess I'm not clear. Oh, and then it says, okay, so it says, "There's a request for board approval for a $50,000 increase to not exceed amount of Greenlink Education's contract," and then it says, "Increase Greenlink Education's contract for fiscal year not to exceed amount by $50,000." So there, I'm just trying to frame this in my mind. So when we like do contracts, and we have a contingency contract, they need to increase what their contingency amount is to $50,000.
Correct. So
What was it before?
Yep, so their current contract for this fiscal year is $135,000, right? And so we're asking to increase that for the cap to be 185.
This is just for the cap, and because they give us build hours, because they build so many hours on the front end, they're anticipating they're gonna go up. So we haven't hit the 135 yet.
No.
But this is to increase the cap for contingency.
Correct, because we've applied for an additional $20 million community grant, and they've spent quite a bit of time on that, and so we've had an increased workload with them to go for the additional 20 million.
Yeah, I appreciate the breakdown of what they did, right? They said, "We did this much more in the beginning, and this is why." That's why I'm good with it. I just wasn't clear on that language, so we're good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Was there another question or comment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight-zero. Next, we have new business. There in your packet, you have a set of documents related to a fee appeal for a FOIA from Sarah Atwood through the Lansing State Journal. In your packet, you have a recommended letter to send back to Ms. Atwood denying the request for appeal. I would note to the board, we don't get this very often. The reason for the appeal of the FOIA was not that the district denied the FOIA in any capacity. It's that the requister of the FOIA has contested the fees that were associated with fulfilling the FOIA request. The district requires a 50% deposit on FOIA fees if the amount exceeds, the amount of the anticipated fees exceeds an amount that I, it'll come to me in just a moment. But what our recommendation is that based on what we know that the district personnel staff has done with communicating with our lawyers, following our FOIA policy, that our recommended fees do represent the hourly rate plus benefits of the two lowest-paid employees in each of the two departments that would be necessary to fulfill those, the FOIA requests. So one department is HR, is going to be needed in order to fulfill the request, and one is within the IT department. And so those calculations that we believe are accurate, and therefore are fee request stands, and so the recommendation is that we deny, that we deny the appeal request. So that's setting things up. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Trustee Nowinski?
I move to deny the FOIA appeal and send the drafted letter.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Nowinski and supported by Vice President Moore. I'm just going to look for just a minute at our Board Secretary to make sure that that will satisfy the requirements for the denial. I didn't read the motion. Just give him just a second. He's gotta read the legalese wording. Sorry, we're just looking at the recommended motion to make sure what we said will work. Just to recap, the motion on the floor is to deny the, to deny the fee, to deny the fee request as outlined in the letter that's presented in our packet. Is that correct, Mr. Nowinski?
Yes.
Perfect. Then we're good. Okay, thank you. All right, now that we have the motion on the floor, are there any additional questions or comments?
Madam President?
Mr. Krim? No, I'm sorry. Trustee Nowinski?
I just wanted to clarify. I saw the information regarding the fees, and that all seems in line. There was a statement in there, in the letter, that the appeal was to deny a public records request in part, but I didn't see anything denied for the request. It was just, it was granted with the fee outlined, and then the person is appealing the fee. Is that correct? I didn't see anything in our initial response that denied anything in the request.
Where do you see the, and where do you see the "in part"? Which paragraph?
The first sentence in the letter, "Dear Rachel, I'm writing you pursuant," and then it says, "To deny a public records request in part and requesting..."
From Ms. Atwood. Oh, sure, right. The district did not deny the, she's appealing the decision made by the district to deny, oh yeah, to deny a record in part and for requesting $608 for the records requested. And we address that we are not, then her letter goes on to say that her problem is that she was, doesn't agree with the fees.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that in the district's response, there was nothing denied that I could see.
Correct.
And so we are just considering, were the fees appropriately applied? And from all the information I've seen, I agree that they were, and that's why I want to make the motion and support it, to deny the appeal.
That's correct. Trustee Nowinski. We don't have anything that was actually denied by the district. Any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great. Motion passes eight-zero. Next, we are on to a brief report of education on EPA clean school bus lottery. Ms. Slate?
Good evening, everyone. Basically, this is just a quick briefing to let you know that we have an intent to apply for additional electric school buses. It is something that is required by the state of Michigan, that we inform the board of our intent to continue with that process. So as you may know, we have already been awarded 20 school buses between Michigan grants and federal grants. There has been an additional lottery window open to apply for additional school, electric school buses. So we are going to continue down that path and apply for an additional 10 school buses that will be housed at Dean with charging stations, and this would be a fully reimbursable grant that allows us to continue on our endeavor going for green initiatives.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Slate this evening? Ms. Slate, I'm presuming you just need to make sure that the notice was, is reflected in today's meeting.
Correct.
Minutes. Perfect. Okay. Seeing none. That moves us to our closed session. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education recess into closed session for the purpose of periodic employment evaluation as requested and permitted in the Open Meetings Act.
It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by
Second.
Trustee Krim. Any questions or comments? Motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Krim?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Navarez Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Nowinski?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Mrs. Willis?
Yes. Motion passes eight-zero, and at 6:48, nope, 6:47 still. We are in closed session. We are in closed session.
All right, we're green, good to go. It is seven fifteen and we are back in open session. We don't have an official motion on the floor, but we do have action for the board to discuss a little bit about what we did in closed session. So just so folks know, who may not be familiar, you guys know the board has a responsibility to evaluate our superintendent on an annual basis. This year, the rules changed and we are also required to do what are our titled periodic evaluations and/or mid-year progress reports with our superintendent. And so that is what we just completed. And then once we are in public session, instead of adopting a formal evaluation or a score, things like that, like we've done in the past, what we do is we provide an update on the goals that remain for the year so that we all are, you know, having a public discourse about what we are going to be continuing to look at our superintendent's progress throughout the rest of his evaluation cycle, which doesn't exactly run on a calendar year or a school year. So it's just up to how we've run our cycle over the years. But I would just like to share that our goals for the remainder of the year for the superintendent, there are three of them. The first goal is we have the goal of reaching an eighty-five percent district-wide graduation rate by 2027. That comes from our strategic plan. That is a strategic plan goal that the board has adopted and then our superintendent has adopted as one of his personal growth goals as well to continue to support the district in reaching that strategic goal of eighty-five percent district-wide graduation rate. The second goal is to increase attendance by two percent based on the, from the 2021 to 2022 school year numbers compared to the 2024, 2025 student numbers out of the MyKit plan. And the final goal for the superintendent is to demonstrate a growth in twenty, a growth of twenty percent in student participation, participation in at least one extracurricular activity by 2027, based on our baseline data, which was baseline data from school year twenty, 2022 through 2023. So our baseline was 2022, in 2023, we had a baseline. By 2027, we want a goal, we have a goal to increase that participation by twenty percent. So superintendent's goal to hit that mark by 2027 as well. Meanwhile, annually, he'll give us progress updates on how that's going. So those are our three goals that we have adopted for our superintendent. Are there any questions or comments from our colleagues and certainly any questions from the superintendent?
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
I just want to thank this board for always putting students first. Graduation is a great final number in terms of if a child succeeded at high school and through the thirteen years. Attendance, of course, is a daily reminder of if a child is coming to school and of course, hopefully, ready to learn. And one of the things that our community was very strong about when we did our strategic plan and we met with hundreds of people and got, you know, data was we want a district that has a vibrant extracurricular activity. So I thank this board for highlighting graduation, attendance, extracurricular activities. And now it is all of our jobs, but definitely my job, to get these three things to happen. So thank you again for really listening to the families, listening to the community and putting this in paper. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll have those reflected in the minutes. Those will be our ongoing goals for the superintendent, certainly wish you luck with those next year, Mr. Shuldiner. Next on the agenda would be discussion items. We don't have any discussion items, but I am going to make this public service announcement while, just in the event there is public that is actually watching this live and there's public that's here. Oh, God. Never mind, I don't have to make the announcement.
Oh, good.
I don't have to make the announcement.
Oh, wonderful.
All right. That brings us on to our report from secretary and announcements.
All righty. I will be making the secretary's report today for December nineteenth. December twenty-third through January third is winter holiday break, so no school, everybody. Don't show up, no one will be here. Community members, if you're interested, we need you, please join, or, excuse me, if you want to support the multicultural task force, is a committee that needs you. They have six meetings, it looks like, for one to one and a half hours per meeting. Registration is required. I'm unsure where you would register. I don't see a phone number, but if you're interested, maybe it's on the website?
Yep, and you can email Jessica Benavides.
Okay, you can email our wonderful superintendent or Jessica Benavides if you're interested in joining the multicultural task force, which will hold, have six meetings for one hour and a half, excuse me, an hour and a half meetings, of meetings, excuse me, that didn't make sense, but just come and join us. All righty. December twentieth and the twenty-first, we will have our drive-through mobile food distribution available for the community. Please call five one seven eight five three seven eight zero zero for more information. Once again, if you're interested in the drive-through mobile food distributions, it will be available December twentieth and the twenty-first, please call five one seven eight five three seven eight zero zero for more information. Our next board meeting will be January ninth, 2025, and it will be our annual organizational meeting and our regular board meeting. The annual organizational meeting will start at five thirty. Have a wonderful holiday and stay warm. All righty, that concludes our report, I guess.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Next is our comments from the board. I do want to signal, it is the last meeting for some of us sitting up here, and I'm going to ignore that there may be potentially pertaining to myself being the last meeting and make sure that we take some time to acknowledge trustees, Nowitzki, and Krim for their contributions during the time that they have been on the board. And we have something to give you somewhere, do we have it?
Yes, we do. We have something special for all of you, for all of you. But I don't know if we want to start first, is it, we have like a team here, so, so, so we're working together. You want to?
I would, yeah, I would, I would love to have Dan Nowitzki come up and Alex, if you could bring, bring the goods, as it were.
Yeah.
That would be great. And Madam President, Vice President, if you want to, and, thank you.
Yeah.
And Josh.
He gets his own.
Yeah, of course. And then we have to take pictures.
Hey, Josh, go and get your stuff.
I think they're doing one at a time.
Oh, one at a time.
I'm going to go over, I'm going to go over to the.
Okay.
It's really weird. Let's hope you're lasting.
Mr. Nowitzki, if you could join us. It's weird because we don't have our podium, we're not in our boardroom. So typically, we'd have you at the podium. This is a note for our greatest appreciation and gratitude to thank you for your dedicated service to Lansing School District and your devotion has made a lasting impact for generations to come, and we really appreciate what you've done. This is for you. Thank you. And now I would like to invite Mr. Krim. And for Mr. Krim, same for you. We would like to present you a token of our greatest appreciation and thank you for your dedicated service for Lansing School District and your devotion has made a lasting impact for generations to come. Thank you. Now, we'll take a photo.
Do you want to take photos of everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
You guys want to get a little bit closer?
Okay, so that's why they should be over there.
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 You don't have to.
I know, I'm like, I don't have to.
Aren't they in the back?
Well, I'm going to open the floor to remarks for our trustees.
Okay. Not for me.
No, not for you. I'm cool.
All right, I would like to open the floor to remarks regarding trustees Nowitzki and Krim, but I'm going to take a point of privilege and go first. I would just like to thank Dan and Joshua for all of your hard work. Gosh, you guys have brought just a wonderful perspective to the board and I've certainly just appreciated. I think about Dan when he applied for the vacancy on both, both tries and both interactions and all the interactions I had with you prior to joining the board. I certainly thank you guys both for all of the investments that you've made and please don't be a stranger to the district. I know that, I'm presuming Josh will continue with your coaching duties. I don't think the boys will let you go if you try. And Dan, you don't stop being a parent just because, you know, we're not in this role and capacity anymore, so I certainly look forward to continuing to be in the civilian life with you all at the end of this month. Any other questions from, oh, Dr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you both so much. So for those listening at home, both Mr. Krim and Mr. Nowitzki were appointed to fill vacancies, which means they had to go through the really brave and difficult process of writing all these essays and coming in for an interview. And so I just really appreciate that both of you have such a servant's heart that you were willing to put yourself forward for the community in that way. Dan, you are so bright and well-prepared. You have just the most thorough understanding of not just parliamentary procedure, but of, of anything that's about to come before the board. Whenever you speak, I know it's going to be something really, really insightful and something that you have really thought deeply about, and that's something I really appreciate about you, especially your commitment to, to climate-friendly updates and changes to our school. I think that you've made a lasting impact in that way by pushing for those changes. Josh, I've gotten to know you because we're on two committees together, so that's truly been a privilege. For those who don't know, Josh is both on the finance committee and the facilities committee. And given his background, he has been an enormously helpful voice in asking incredibly smart questions of our facilities team and our finance team to make sure that we are getting the best possible products at the best possible price, and he just has such a detailed understanding of those industries that it's been really amazing to me, a person that does not have that expertise, of just to watch him work as a committee member in those capacities. So I just want to say that you will both be missed and you both have certainly made an impact and we appreciate you so much.
Madam President, if I may, Mr. Williams.
So I'm going to go that way first because Dan is right here. So Joshua, I haven't worked on any committees, but in the conversations and just a little bit of time, I have been grateful to know you, excited, but we talked about some things tonight, so I know we're not getting rid of each other, you know, school-based here, Eastern, coaching and everything, but just some of the other things you were talking about, the nonprofit and profits for the schools and the things to see us, the community still grow, so I'm excited to help with that, work with that, and just keep going with you. Dan and I sit on the policy committee together, but a lot of times, we're just sitting here, okay, is this right, Robert's rule? So I'm really going to miss learning just when people don't even know that we're sitting in meetings and he's showing me or sharing with things, the policy.
And now it is all of our jobs, but definitely my job, to get these three things to happen. So, thank you again for really listening to the families, listening to the community, and putting this in paper. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll have those reflected in the minutes. Those will be our ongoing goals for the superintendent, certainly. Wish you luck with those next year, Mr. Shuldiner. Next on the agenda would be discussion items. We don't have any discussion items, but I am going to make this public service announcement while just in the event there is public that is actually watching this live and there's public that's here. Never mind, I don't have to make the announcement.
Oh, good.
I don't have to make the announcement.
Oh, wonderful.
All right. That brings us on to our report from secretary and announcements.
Alrighty. I will be making the secretary's report today for December 19th. December 23rd through January 3rd is winter holiday break, so no school, everybody. Don't show up, no one will be here. Community members, if you're interested, we need you, please jo- or, excuse me, if you want to support the multicultural task force, is a committee that needs you. They have six meetings, it looks like, for one to one and a half hours per meeting. Registration is required. I'm unsure where you would register. I don't see a phone number, but if you're interested, maybe it's on the website?
Yep, and you can email Jessica Benavides.
Okay, you can email our wonderful superintendent or Jessica Benavides if you're interested in joining the multicultural task force, which will hold, have six meetings for one hour and a half, excuse me, an hour and a half, meetings, of meetings, excuse me, that didn't make sense, but just come and join us. Alrighty. December 20th and the 21st, we will have our drive-through mobile food distribution available for the community. Please call 517-853-7800 for more information. Once again, if you're interested in the drive-through mobile food distributions, it will be available December 20th and the 21st, please call 517-853-7800 for more information. Our next board meeting will be January 9th, 2025, and it will be our annual organizational meeting and our regular board meeting. The annual organizational meeting will start at 5:30. Have a wonderful holiday and stay warm. Alrighty, that concludes our report, I guess.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Next is our comments from the board. I do want to signal, it is the last meeting for some of us sitting up here, and I'm going to ignore that there may be potentially pertaining to myself being the last meeting, and make sure that we take some time to acknowledge trustees Nowitzki and Krim for their contributions during the time that they have been on the board, and we have something to give you somewhere. Do we have it?
Yes, we do. We have something special for all of you, for all of you. But I don't know if we want to start first, is it, we have like a team here, so, so, so we're working together. You want to?
I would, yeah, I would, I would love to have Dan Nowitzki come up, and Alex, if you could bring, bring the goods, as it were.
Yeah.
That would be great, and Madam President, Vice President, if you want to, and, thank you.
Yeah.
And Josh.
And Josh.
He gets his own.
Yeah, of course.
Hey, Josh, go and get your stuff.
I think you're doing one at a time.
Oh, one at a time.
I'm going to go over, I'm going to go over to the. It's really weird.
Mr. Nowitzki, if you could join us. It's weird because we don't have our podium, we're not in our boardroom. So typically, we'd have you at the podium. This is a note for our greatest appreciation and gratitude to thank you for your dedicated service to Lansing School District, and your devotion has made a lasting impact for generations to come, and we really appreciate what you've done. This is for you. Thank you. And now I would like to invite Mr. Krim. And for Mr. Krim, same for you. We would like to present you a token of our greatest appreciation, and thank you for your dedicated service for Lansing School District, and your devotion has made a lasting impact for generations to come. Thank you. Now, I will take a photo. All right. I would like to open the floor to remarks regarding trustees Nowitzki and Krim, but I'm going to take a point of privilege and go first. I would just like to thank Dan and Joshua for all of your hard work. Gosh, you guys have brought just a wonderful perspective to the board, and I've certainly just appreciated. I think about Dan when he applied for the vacancy on both, both tries and both interactions and all the interactions I had with you prior to joining the board. I certainly thank you guys both for all of the investments that you've made, and please don't be a stranger to the district. I know that, I'm presuming, Josh, you'll continue with your coaching duties. I don't think the boys will let you go if you tried. And Dan, you don't stop being a parent just because, you know, we're not in this role and capacity anymore, so I certainly look forward to continuing to be in the civilian life with you all at the end of this month. Any other questions from, oh, Dr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you both so much. So, for those listening at home, both Mr. Krim and Mr. Nowitzki were appointed to fill vacancies, which means they had to go through the really brave and difficult process of writing all these essays and coming in for an interview. And so, I just really appreciate that both of you have such a servant's heart, that you were willing to put yourself forward for the community in that way. Dan, you are so bright and well-prepared. You have just the most thorough understanding of not just parliamentary procedure, but of, of anything that's about to come before the board. Whenever you speak, I know it's going to be something really, really insightful, and something that you have really thought deeply about, and that's something I really appreciate about you, especially your commitment to, to climate-friendly updates and changes to our school. I think that you've made a lasting impact in that way by pushing for those changes. Josh, I've gotten to know you because we're on two committees together, so that's truly been a privilege. For those who don't know, Josh is both on the finance committee and the facilities committee, and given his background, he has been an enormously helpful voice in asking incredibly smart questions of our facilities team and our finance team to make sure that we are getting the best possible products at the best possible price, and he just has such a detailed understanding of those industries, that it's been really amazing to me, a person that does not have that expertise, of just to watch him work as a committee member in those capacities. So, I just want to say that you will both be missed, and you both have certainly made an impact, and we appreciate you so much.
Madam President, if I may, Mr. Williams. So, I'm going to go that way first, because Dan is right here. So, Joshua, I haven't worked on any committees, but in the conversations in just a little bit of time, I have been grateful to know you, excited, but we talked about some things tonight, so I know we're not getting rid of each other, you know, school-based here, Eastern, coaching and everything, but just some of the other things you were talking about, the nonprofit and profits for the schools and the things to see us, the community still grow, so I'm excited to help with that, work with that, and just keep going with you. Dan and I sit on the policy committee together, but a lot of times, we're just sitting here, okay, is this right, Robert's rule? So, I'm really going to miss learning, just when people don't even know that we're sitting in meetings and he's showing me or sharing with things. The policy committee, oh my God, he has made me go home and do so much homework, so much homework, but I love it because it gives you a better understanding. He's just the overall good. I say he's a silent giant with the wealth of knowledge in the room. He's going to be missed, but I don't think you're going anywhere. You're not going anywhere, right? Make sure I got your wife on speed dial, and I'll just get the answers from her to get them from you, okay? So, I'm going to miss you guys, I really am.
After Navarre Martinez?
Yes, so, we all got appointed to the board, not to, you know, distance and time from each other, and it's been really great kind of learning the ropes with both of you. And like everybody has said, I hope that you're not going anywhere. I'm going to be calling and asking for advice, so please answer my call. And yeah, thank you very much for your service to the board. Both of you have put in a lot of work, and we all really appreciate it. The school better, the school district is better for it, so thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, to both of you, thank you for serving. I mean, you put your name up, and I think the board did a really good job in selecting you to, three, I think. But, but you two, as mentioned, you know, you, you were well-prepared, you had good questions, and you presented your reports well. I just hope that you consider running again, if not for school board, for another office, because I think people like you are, are needed. And so, think about it. If you've got enough time. But again, thank you both for, for your work, for contribution, and we'll miss you for sure. Thank you.
Sure thing. Trustee Moore?
Yes, I just want to tell both of you, thank you so much for taking the time to serve the community and the board. Dan, it's truly been a pleasure. We served on the personnel committee before, and Dan raises lots of great questions. He truly took us to another level, I think. So, thank you again for all, what you've done to contribute to that committee. And Joshua, it's really been a pleasure. We haven't served on any committees together, but it's been a pleasure just, you know, chit-chatting with you. So, best of luck in all your endeavors.
Sure thing, Superintendent Shuldiner.
Thank you. I'll also defer to our wonderful ET as well. I just want to thank both of you. You've both been so much of these great lights to support this district. Your work on committees, your work on the board, your work with the staff has been terrific. Certainly, I can't wait to see you on the sidelines of games. Your work with our children has been terrific, Josh, and really your experience in your day job with helping us think about our green energy, thinking about construction, thinking about building a better district. A lot of the work that we're doing is thanks to your support and your understanding. Dan, your understanding of policies and procedures has kept us out of danger more than once. I really can't tell you how much that means to me, having sat on numerous boards throughout my life, having somebody at the table who understands how these things work in a really, really granular way, has been terrific. But I also want to highlight your love of this district as a parent, the fact that your family has been really just such a huge part of supporting this district as a parent, as a board member, and certainly as a community member. So, to both of you, thank you so much, and I, I don't know if you guys want to say anything, but I know you've all worked closely with the two of them, so thank you.
I'm happy to speak. I'm on committees with both of you, and I would just like to say that I have a great appreciation for what both of you have brought to our everyday work. Sometimes we get down into the weeds, and you guys help make us see a bigger picture on where to continue striving to make the district a better place, and I appreciate both of you, and I hope neither one of you are strangers, because both of you have provided such great insight to us as employees. So, please stay in touch and stay around. I look forward to still working with both of you in the future.
Thank you. So, you joined the family, and family members never leave. So, you'll always be a part of this family. I didn't work much with Josh, but I certainly had an opportunity to work, to work with Dan, and I truly appreciate the time that we have spent together. However, I may not have worked with you, but when I was sitting there, I got some questions that made me go back and reflect, so, which is just an opportunity for growth. And so, that's what you brought, right? And so, when you push us to grow, the outcome is that our kids, it's, it's all about the kids, and our kids grow because of that. So, thank you both, I appreciate it.
Mr. Krim, I want to thank you for how respectful you have been in your position, and like Cordelia said, the questions that you ask always felt like they were well-intended and for the growth of the district. So, I really appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Nowitzki, working with you in the policy committee, you really took me for a wonderful ride. I have learned so much from you, and all I can say, thank you.
I'm not sure how to follow all that, but I do, I do want to say that I have just really appreciated getting to know both of you, though I'm not participant of the committees that you've been on. It's really wonderful to know that we have two wonderful champions for the Lansing School District in all that you bring with history in the Lansing School District, and also as a parent, having your, your children here, and so, we just look forward to many years of you championing the district in the community, and know that this is always going to be your home. So, we just appreciate all of your service and time. Any agenda this evening?
It's not over yet. It's not over yet.
Vice President Moore?
Can you join us at the microphone? No, you, oh, oh, yeah, I got to get on the microphone. Oh, I was singing, y'all. Ooh, this is, oh, this is a rough one. This one here is a rough one, because she's loved by the district, by the community, because she fam. All right. With our deepest gratitude, we proudly recognize Rachel, what's your middle name?
Rochelle.
Ooh, Rachel Rochelle Willis, for her steadfast support guiding us towards success in the Lansing School District. You are honored for many years of dedicated service. We give this plaque, this, this token of appreciation to this wonderful, wonderful, wonderful person. Thank you for all what you've done. Ben, you know I get lost for words. So, "You are so beautiful to us."
It's a serenade, thank you.
Nobody will ever want me to sing, ever, but words, words cannot express how much I am thankful to Rachel for all of the things that she's done. And so, we also have put together a video, because there are other people that want to say very similar things who might or might not be here today. So, I don't know, can we hit it? Turn it, turn it on? Awesome. Yeah, right, we created our own, did you know? Yeah, exactly.
Good luck in your new path. Something is telling me that you will do very well. Thanks, gracias.
Hi, Rachel. It seems impossible that we're saying goodbye to you after 13 years of service. The impact that you've had on this district is wide and broad enough to have impacted the lives of hundreds of thousands of families, and to have charted a clear course for the future of this district. Thank you for showing us what leadership looks like. On a personal level, I so admire your intelligence, your tenacity, and your ability to tell it like it is. I'd say I want to be you when I grow up, but you are famously a few months younger than me. You're leaving big shoes to fill, but the example that you've set for us is loud and clear. I'm so glad that all of Ingham County is going to be benefiting from your expertise, and we'll miss you so much.
Rachel, first of all, I want to thank you very much for being such a great mentor and a guide for me on the board. When I came on a year ago, you were so kind with your time to help me kind of learn the ropes and meet the people and do, you know, all of the, learn all of the things that I, you know, had to, had to kind of come up to date on. And I'm really, really sad that we are losing you on the board, because you're such a great leader, and you know, you have all the institutional knowledge, you have all of the great information that we need, but I am grateful that the greater Lansing community now gets to experience your leadership. As a resident of Lansing, I'm very excited that you get to now be on the board of commissioners, and I look forward to continuing, working with you for our students, our faculty, and our staff. Now, you're, you'll be in a different position, but I know that you still care very deeply about our students, and I'm very hopeful that we'll continue working together, and thank you so much.
Rachel, thank you very much for all your dedication to the Lansing School District. I would like to mention as well that all the changes that happened in the district while you were part of it will impact future generations, and, and that's going to be very good for them. And then, I'd like to thank you for all your help during the time we have worked together. I've learned a lot, and I really appreciate working with you.
First and foremost, congratulations on a great tenure as a school board member and a board president. It was an honor and pleasure serving with you, and looking forward to continuing to collaborate in this next iteration of your career. We've known each other for a very, very long time, thinking back to your days at Gardner Middle School as a middle schooler, and I as the leader of the peer mediation program, and you were one of my favorite peacemakers. And now, looking back at the leader you were then and the leader you've grown into, I couldn't be prouder of you and looking for nothing but the best moving forward. Congratulations, Rachel.
I met Rachel 14 years ago. We were running for the school board together. I had the honor of serving with her on the school board and the privilege to watch her lead our district for so many years. I'm excited for the next journey of her public service record and can't wait to see what she does at the county commission. Congratulations, Rachel. You've really made us all proud.
Am I that? Okay. Rachel, all I got to say is you're mother's daughter. Serving with your mom for I don't know how many years, and, and lived for all these years. It's like belonging to family, you know? I wish I'd, I'd have been able to bring a picture of Mariachi Delbert, and so people could see that you played the violin in a Mariachi group, and you probably sang as well.
But, thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your support to the Lansing School District. We will miss you, because you will just be over there. I mean, it's, it's still part of the family, so we'll miss you here, but we will miss you in the community. Thank you very much.
Rachel, so I'm going to say President Emeris, and now County Commissioner Willis. It has been an honor, a privilege, a battle, a teaching moment, but I can say we've grown together. We've moved forward together. We've, I can say we forged a big fiddle, little sister bond. We're not going to say which way it go, because that'll tell who's the oldest for real, but also I can say family, because I have grown to love your daughter. I've grown to love you as a person, your husband as a friend. And then, you know, we have our little other private moments outside of here, you know, the nail salon and other things, but I'm so excited for this next journey for you. I'm sure you're not going to leave us, because unfortunately, you're still going to be my boss as the county commissioner on my day job, so I can't get rid of you. But honestly, I can say I am so thankful and grateful for these last two years of growth. I'm sure there's still going to be some teachable moments in private, some hangout time to learn and grow. So, R2W, from R2W with love. Congratulations, I'm going to miss you, but stay connected.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Nowitzki?
I just want to also extend my thanks for your support of me personally, and also for all that you offer to the board. I know, serving as president brings a certain weight and time commitment that we don't even understand. So, thank you for that, for many years of serving honestly and thoughtfully and boldly for this district. It's not an easy role to have in the public eye, and appreciate you willing to continue in a new role in that effort. And thank you to all the board members for the opportunity. I've had to serve just for these few months. It's been eye-opening and, and joyful for me to have this opportunity, and I look forward to working with you again in other, in other capacities.
Go for it, Dan, go for it.
Just want to say thank you for your time. I know this, this is, this isn't the first time that we've met. I've, I've spoken to the school board when you were serving when I was in high school, and I think that it's wonderful that you continue to do, that your family's been such a, such a huge monument to this, to this district, that we can count on you. I know that we continue to count on you in a different capacity now, and congratulations on that. I also want to thank the, the school board for giving me the opportunity to serve the district here. I've learned significant more about the district than I thought I ever would, and it's, it's amazing to see how much the district has come from when I was a student here, and how much I know it's going to continue to grow. I want to thank Ben, as well as the district staff, for all their, their work and their support, and, you know, helping me find the, find the reins and to help me understand all my questions that I have, whether it's in the weeds or not. I just want to thank you guys for everything you guys do. I know that all the hard work you guys do doesn't always get noticed, and I want to say that you guys are, do amazing work and keep it up, please. You are benefiting our, our students and our district in such a positive way and manner, and I hope that we continue to. and I hope that we continue to go down the right path that we are. Thank you, guys.
Go for it. It's not, I'm trying not to cry, y'all, only because this sugar right here means a lot to me. Rachel, I don't know, words, oh my gosh, girl, words, I don't know what to say about you, because I really, I love you so much, I have learned so much from your boss-ness, sitting next to you. Can I play Black Girl Magic?
You can.
Black Girl Magic. I don't know what I would have done in this, in this role without you sitting next to me, because it is a lot of weight. Dan said it all, but I appreciate your boss-ness, I appreciate your courage, I appreciate your logic, I appreciate you keeping my emotions in check when I want to just fly off the handle, and I look at you. I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate you teaching me and mentoring me. So, this is Black Girl Magic, and we will never depart, and I do, I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and, I don't know, I just love you so, let's hug. Let's hug, because this is not the end.
Nope.
This is not the end.
Blood and blood out.
Yes, that's it, all right. Ben, the floor is yours.
Can I turn over the staff?
Oh, absolutely. Everybody's over there crying.
Oh, my God. He's the voice of reason, voice of reason.
Well, it's, actually, I'm glad that you guys are looking the same way that I am. When I, I hope you know that when I look at you, I look at more than you and the wonderful mother that was a board member, and I can go back to 2005, the first time that your family, your mother walked into my office with Dave Hackett, they together they came in to get me as a, as a young central administrator, and from that day, it turned out to be that she became the biggest fan of preschools, and she supported preschools all through the district. And after that, you came in, and I want to thank you not just for the kindness and the firmness that you had, but I really want to thank you for how you protected this district in so many difficult situations. You always made the best decision for the school and the kids and the staff and the community. Thank you.
I'm going to try to turn this mic around so I can look at you when I turn, instead of this way. We love you, girl. You're going to be missed. Speaking of remembering, you know, this is hard, this is, this is tough, but, you know, first of all, I've known your mom, I knew your mom, of course, everybody knows, knew your mom, right? And then your dad came and worked for me after he retired from the county, and then you came along, and you stopped in my office as Director of Public Safety to check in, to inquire, and so, we always had conversations along the timeframe that I've been in administration and central leadership. And I want to share with you that I appreciate you, I appreciate just the casualness that you had with me and the easiness and us, just, it felt like we were friends, right? We don't see much, although, we only live about five blocks from each other, but we really don't see much of each other. I think, I don't know even how long you've been over there, but every now and then, you know, when I walk, I might see you. I need to start walking more now, I guess, right? So, and that being said, I hope that, you know, first of all, the door, it will always remain open, and you just walk right on through, okay? So Jess will always be here, will be here for you, and for me personally, if you ever need anything, I'm here.
I'm going to make Jess finish, and I'm going to go next. I'm trying. I have not been on ET for very long, but I will say that you welcomed me with open arms. I felt supported by you the entire way, through hard times and through fun times, and I hope you are not a stranger, and I am not losing your cell phone number, and you better answer when I text or when I call. Thank you very much for everything that you've done. So I guess I get to be the lucky one, because I still have you on the multicultural task force, so I do get to see her bi-weekly, just don't be jealous, everyone, just saying. I just want to thank you for your incredible leadership, your belief not only in the school district, but in me personally, the leadership on the board, and just the way that you lead very steadily brings a very silent confidence that we really felt, I think I can speak for all executive team in that way, that you really brought a trust of us with the board and just with the district, knowing that your leadership really has made a difference for our kids, for our schools, all the decisions that you've made from all of the buildings that we now get to go on and see your name there, that you're leaving a legacy for your children and for us as a district, that we know that your service and your time here has really led to really great, great things. So, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for the district, but also just personally. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you, ET, for those great words to Rachel. I know Rachel and I will continue our friendship well past today, but, you know, I can't be legally the last word on anything at these board meetings, so I know I, somebody will follow me, which is always great, because I don't ever want anything to be the last with Rachel. You've been such an important part of this district, from being a student to being a board member, to being a parent. You understand this community, you understand this school district, and every decision you've made, through difficult times, through fun times, through interesting times, everything you've done, because I've been able to see it firsthand, has put children first, has put this community first, and has put love and care and understanding first, and that's the greatest thing that we can ever ask from a school board member and a school board president. So, thank you for everything, and I cannot wait to hear about all of the great work that you're going to do in a different public service capacity.
I can go next, so that Ben doesn't get in trouble. We don't get in trouble. So I said some other stuff in the video already, but just like Dr. Kavanaugh, I am a couple months older than you, maybe 24, you know, just a couple, but you've been, you know, a great mentor to me, and being a public servant is really hard work and really time-consuming, and being a mother is really hard work and really time-consuming, and having a career is hard and time-consuming, and I don't know how you do all of that and make it look so easy, because I'm trying to do that, and it is not easy. I certainly don't make it look as easy as you do, because I'm always late, and I'm always not answering text messages, and so, I will, I will continue to admire you, and, you know, I, I'm very, very grateful that you're my friend. Thank you.
Where's the party?
We got the cake right there.
Well, I, I do have, I do have a couple of words I'd like to say if you all could indulge me, and I promise to keep them brief adjacent. Something I just want to say, you know, people ask, oh, boy. Okay, maybe I won't say a few words. People ask, how did I become this way? What I have, like, what's, tell us your story. And as some of you may know, I'm homegrown here in Lansing School District by whoever went digging through the archives to find those photos, you know, that I've been here a long time. And one of my core memories is when I was in the second grade, my mom fell, and she slipped on some ice inside of our house, and she fell and she broke her arm, and it was, it was a visible break, like you could see, and she's holding her arm like this, and children back in my day, we had these things called house phones, they had speed dial numbers, and my mom's sitting on the floor screaming, and we don't call 911, we don't call my dad, we called the school, because that's what we knew to do, that was where we were safe. We called the school, and my principal at the time was Mr. Synecrope, and Mr. Synecrope came to our house with two staff, and he took my mom to the emergency room, and the two staff misliked, and someone else stayed with us until they could get a hold of my dad. And my mom will tell this story, poor Mr. Synecrope, he's carrying my mom's purse and hobbling her into the emergency room, and he has to go through her purse, and my mom, remember, she was so embarrassed, because she had feminine hygiene products and all this stuff, and Mr. Synecrope's trying to find her ID, and when they asked her, who brought you in? He goes, I brought in my friend. And my mom would always tell me that story, and I watched how she did her service, and I just want to point out, from the year 2000 to 2006, you had one of us on the board, you've had one of us on the board since 2011, or '12. So it really does feel like the end of an era, but not really, because I have a child in the district, so now you guys just get to deal with me coming to you from the podium, and getting my emails from my Gmail account, so to my .net account, and just to share that, I have that deep and rich history with this district, and I intend to instill that further with my child. I joked a little bit about this being a family, it's blood and blood out, but this has been all that I've known. So I really appreciate you all, I appreciate your appreciation of me, you know, how to make a girl feel special, and a lot of my life has changed since I've been on the board, I've started a family, I became a mom, I got my master's degree. A lot can happen outside of these, time on the board, and so I just strongly encourage you all to continue to support each other. I know that the best in this district's history is still yet to come, and so I just thank you all for that, I really do.
Yeah, pictures. Okay. Pictures. Do you guys want to adjourn? Yeah, oh, we got to adjourn. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education adjourn.
I accept it.
The move by Trustee Kavanaugh and Trustee Moore that the Board of Education adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. At 8:02, we are adjourned.
And we have cake.